For viewing, you can see this broadcasted on Hartford Public Access Television, www.hpatv.org, or Channel 96 for Comcast and Xfinity customers. So for tonight, I am going to be reading the public hearing procedures and the rules. So for public hearings shall be conducted in accordance with the following procedures. Each person wishing to address the council or committee thereof shall, upon recognition by the presiding officer, give his or her name and address, and if he or she represents a group, shall, in addition, state for the record the name and address of said group or organization, and shall limit his or her remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks who become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith barred by the presiding officer from further audience at said meeting unless permission to remain is granted by two-thirds vote of the council members present and voting. During the public hearing, there shall be no debate by the council. Although questions may be asked by council of persons making such... And so first, I'd like to also introduce for the council, representing the council today, we have Council President Malley Rizzato. We have Councilman James Sanchez, Councilwoman Shirley Surgeon, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, and Councilman John Gale. I think that is it. Okay, so we're going to go and list of... Oh, and so let me discuss the items that are up for public hearing tonight as well. So number one is an ordinance amending Section 32-18 to extend the elderly tax relief program to elderly Hartford homeowners for taxes due on the grand list of October 1st, 2020, and increase slightly the income limits for eligibility of the municipal code. Item number two on the agenda, ordinance amending Chapter 28, Article 10, Section 28 through 196 of the Neighborhood Revitalization Zone Committees of the Municipal Code introduced by Mayor Bronin. And item one was also introduced by Mayor Bronin. Resolution number three, item number three, resolution requesting to superimpose the name of Jaquan Walters at the Rosemont and Main Street to the intersection of Rosemont and Cambridge Street, be displayed as Jaquan, JQ Walters Way, introduced by myself, Councilman LeBron. And so I do have the list. I'm just looking to see if any other council members have logged in. If I can introduce them, I do not see any, so we'll go according to the list. So first, I have Amber Cohen's. Amber Cohen's, you have the floor. Please unmute your mic.
So my name is Amber Cohen's. I don't know if I can say who I am correctly and where I'm coming from. What's the next thing?
Yep, so you know, your name, your address, and the item that you're speaking about.
Okay, so my name is Amber Cohen's. The address on this 11 South Perry Avenue of Doliette, Illinois, 6436 is my zip code. I'm... That's item three in regards to changing the street name to JQ's Way. I just wanted to speak to the person that he was and the being that he was and what he did for our community and what he did for anyone he touched. I went to school with him for four years in college, and I remember him being the first person I met as me being an RA. He was my first, one of my first kids as my resident. And if I could name the whole city Hartford, the whole city of Hartford, his name, it would be done. He had way more life to give, way more blessings to give to this world. Excuse me for, you know, stumbling. It just was a life that was taken way too soon and shouldn't have been taken. And if we can do anything and everything to remember who he is and to bring life to his name for the rest of our lives, then I think we are still doing way less than what we could have done while he was still be here. He just was a great man. He was a great athlete. He was a great kid. He did everything he could for his family. He was a great brother. He was a father figure to his siblings. Now his siblings are without a father figure and a brother due to the loss of their father as well. He was a great son to his mother. His mother showed up in every event, and when I say she showed up, she showed up big. The Walters and Solomons, you know, they celebrated their son and their family members. And I feel like we should do so now that he has left this earth. So I'm all here for anything that we can do. If I could see his name every day, I want it to be seen, whether it's on a street, whether it's on a park, whether it's on the ground, and we do a mural, whether we change anything that we could, whether we have a scholarship fund for him. I just need his life and his legacy to continue on. Everything that that man would have done if he was still here, I want to see done, you know, 1,000 times more. So I'm here to speak about item three. I'm here to speak on behalf of JQ and the person that he was, the brother that he was to me, the human that he was to this world. It doesn't surprise me that God took him because the best are always taken early. So that's what I have to say about item three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amber Cohen's. Just a reminder to everyone, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your phone. Thank you. So next, we have Ms. Nikki Salmon. Ms. Nikki Salmon, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Salmon.
Okay, I'm Jaquan's aunt, 16 Addison Street in Hartford, Connecticut. So first, I would like to say that thank you to the council for having this hearing on imposing the Rosemont with Jaquan's name. Today marks four months since he's been taken. So I'm praying the 19th will show us a little bit of a ray of light or something. So Jaquan was, he was a beautiful human being. Sorry for tearing up. He was light. He was simply a beautiful soul. He had this amazing ability to make everyone feel loved and special. He overcame a lot. He had a lot of heartaches. He had, he lost a lot of friends, a lot of families, but he never let that dim his light. Instead, he carried their names on wherever he went. A vote for this street would not only be for Jaquan, it would be everyone that he loved and lost. It would be for Keith Bernie. It would be for Daylon. It would be for Zoe. It would be for Joey. So many other names that I could list that Jaquan had tatted on his arms. Jaquan loved his city. He loved Hartford. He loved growing up around the North End. He loved working with children. He had hopes of building a recreation center in that lot on Rosemont. And so I'm praying you guys vote to give that to him as one of the last things that, you know, we can carry on for him. Jaquan was a glue to our family. He was a peacemaker. He was the one that constantly made us laugh. He was such a respectful, and he was respected throughout Connecticut, not just only in Hartford. He had a tremendous love for life. He was only 24, but he lived a beautiful life in Hartford. He loved this city, and you can ask anyone, this city loved him back. And so I'm just praying that you guys vote yes for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Salmon. Next is Ms. Trishen Salmon. If you can mute your mic. Ms. Trishen Salmon, I think you, if you hit point star 67. Ms. Salmon, if you could hit star 67, let me see if I can unmute you. There you go. I'm sorry, I just muted you again. Press star 67 again, Ms. Trishen. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
So first, I want to thank the council for hearing us today. Today is the 19th, so I couldn't vote live because it was a very hard day for us today. It's the fourth month since Jaquan passed. And I just want to say Jaquan was a lifelong resident of Hartford. He grew up on 16 Addison Street, where we spent 23 years out of his 24 years of life. He loved his city, and the city loved him back. He was actively involved with his community by mentoring children from all angles through the love of basketball. He attended all of Hartford's school system up until graduation from 12th grade. After that, he attended Albertus Magnus College, where he had a four-year degree in communication. He then pursued his desire of playing overseas ball and was drafted to play pro ball in Argentina. Upon returning, he worked for the Village for Families and Children, where he mentored children there who grew to love him. His impact was so big, I received hundreds of letters from the children expressing their sorrow and the impact they had on him. Each one of them, I framed because it meant so much to me. Jaquan was very loved by his city and was given a proclamation by the mayor, Lou Bronin, for his determination to give back to his community and the youth of Hartford. He was known for his beaming smile, for being kind, not only to children, but everyone. He was loving and devoted to his family and friends. Hence the reason we started the JQ Jaquan Walters Scholarship Fund through the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving. Through this foundation, we want all children coming up in the North End of Hartford, the South End of Hartford, Hartford in general, to know that it doesn't matter where you came from. If you can achieve, you can achieve if you believe. And that's what he always said. It didn't matter where he came from. He can achieve if he believes. Thank you guys for listening. And I pray that this 19th of the month, this was some significance that this fell on this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salmon. I want to also introduce Majority Leader TJ Clark for coming. Next on the list is Marquita Reynolds. Marquita, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marquita Reynolds. I reside at 78 Red Street, Manchester, Connecticut. I'm here to talk about item number three on the behalf of Jaquan Walters, JQ Way. I was a coworker of his at the Village for Families and Children, where we worked closely together. So as he came into our company, I trained him, I molded him, he helped me. We mentored the kids together. I mean, I'm all for the JQ Way, even when I seen him out in the public. He was the same man. Nothing ever changed with him, the smile, the laughter, him joking around. He made the kids happy. There were no happy place for some of the kids. Some of the kids were lost. But when JQ came in, he was like a dad to them. He was like a big brother. All we did was joke around, make songs, and make dances. So, I mean, JQ, he was just amazing. He was amazing brother. I actually grew up with his stepfather, Joey. So I knew JQ when he was a little boy. He didn't know who I was, but we became friends and became close friends. And I'm just here to hope that and pray that you guys vote for the JQ Way as we still ride down Rosemont just to see if he appears somewhere. That's my story that I live with each and every day, that I want JQ to walk through the door. So I'm all for the voting, and I'm here, and I hope and pray to God that you guys help us have some sense of relief or something for our dear fellow brother, JQ. Thank you.
Thank you, Marquita Reynolds. Next, we have Reverend Lee Trey Brown. Reverend Lee Trey Brown, if you're a call-in user, press star 67. Oh, there you go. There you go, Trey Brown.
Good afternoon and good afternoon to Majority Leader Thomas Clark. My name is Reverend Lee Trey Brown III. I am from 181 Overbrook Avenue in the British Connecticut, and I'm calling to address item number three to make sure that Jaquan Walters' name is honored on Rosemont. I gave the eulogy for Jaquan Walters. I attended Albertus Magnus with Jaquan Walters. I prone to even love Jaquan even more because of his mother and Jada and Kyrie. I've loved JQ the way that the great community of Hartford loved JQ. You couldn't help but to love and to really appreciate the man that Jaquan Walters was. From his laugh, to his rapping skills, to the way that he played basketball, the way that he excelled on the court and off the court academically. Jaquan Walters was a hero. Upon losing Daylon Franchise Or, and that's, JQ was the glue that kept not only his family together, but the great community of Albertus Magnus and everywhere in Connecticut. Even people outside of Connecticut, even in Argentina, respected and loved JQ. September 19th, 2020 should not have happened. His life was cut short at the age of 24. That age is very significant because on March 11th, 2016, my sister was 24 when she passed away. And when I got the call in the news, I immediately broke down at my job. So I'm asking all of you to honor this man who gave himself freely and wholly, not because he just wanted it for a spotlight or for a title. He did it because he knew how to love. You know, he knew how to love. He knew how to make everybody smile. He knew how to make everybody engage and really just be themselves. You couldn't help but to love a man like Jaquan Walters. And the legacy that he leaves behind is so tremendous. Every day, I wake up on Facebook and I'm watching his video. Hopefully, he comes back. But God had different options. God had different assignments for this young man. And it hurts my heart because a mother is without a son. Brothers and sisters are without their big brother, who they look to as a father. And they had just recently, I think it was in 2015, lost his stepfather. This shouldn't be, so I'm asking you guys to please name Rosemont after Jaquan O'Sono Walters. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Reverend Brown. Next, we have, excuse me if I mispronounce the name, Deja McKim. Your floor is yours.
You pronounced it right. So I just wanted to start by saying thank you for considering the honorary street name change proposal. As I'm sure many of you have probably heard before, Jaquan has always been incredibly active, not only in the community of Hartford, but surrounding towns as well. Jaquan was a lighthearted spirit that brought all of us a sense of comfort and hope, and he left America many. And for him, that just came naturally. To know him was to love him. I have a younger brother, 19 years old, and one night he told me, "I didn't really know JQ like that, but I always looked up to him." And my brother is just one of many that felt this way about him. Although we may have not been, although he may not have been physically present in some people's lives, he still managed to inspire them from a distance. I think it's important for us to set the tone for the people, and most importantly, the youth that we are raising in our community today, and show them that we stand together, show them that we are one community, show them that we value each other, and that we acknowledge the great lives that has always been an asset to our community. We have to show them that lives like Jaquan's do not go unnoticed, and completing an honorary name change is just a small token of acknowledgement.
Thank you, Ms. McKim. Next, again, I apologize if I say the name incorrectly. Anwell Saint Juice, Anwell Saint Just. If you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone. A second time, Anwell Saint Just. If you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone. And a third time, Anwell Saint Just. If you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone. Okay, moving on. Tiffany Robinson. Tiffany Robinson, if you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone. Second time, Tiffany Robinson. If you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone. Third time, last time, Tiffany Robinson. Okay. Next, we have Stephen Samuels. I see Stephen Samuels on the screen. Stephen Samuels, the floor is yours.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Stephen Samuels again. I thank you for giving me the time to speak of a lost brother, of JQ. JQ was many things to me. JQ was a teammate of mine's. I was happy and luckily to be able to be a teammate with JQ over the past five summers in the Pro-Am, as well as in other sporting events. JQ was a brightful, a very courageous and ambitious young black man. And I feel like it's there to be able to remember that man by having that street name named after him. So we could be able to, if kids come up and ask about Jaquan, we could be able to tell them that, hey, he did a lot of things for the community. He was a part of the community in many ways. And this is one of the ways we decided to show our appreciation to his life, right? So we could be able to embrace JQ year after year and many other things. But this right here could be very, very monumental for the city of Hartford because he meant a lot to us. And I appreciate all of you for giving us the time to be able to express and give you our emotions about JQ. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stephen Samuels. I see Anwell Saint Just is on the phone now. Anwell, the floor is yours.
How you doing? My name is Anya Saint Justy. Yeah, to touch on a little bit what Steve said, it's definitely would be monumental for the city. I know how much his hometown meant to him. And it was a big, big blow to the city, so it definitely be amazing for that to happen. Again, I'm thankful to, everybody else, pretty sure is thankful also, that you guys are even given the opportunity for this to happen. And yeah, he's a great dude, down-to-earth. Gave back to the community all he wanted. That's really what he wanted to do mostly, give back. Show that no matter what, you could do it, like pro basketball player. Give back to the community, give back to the kids. Show the kids that wherever you come from, you can still do what I did, pretty much. So I feel like this, this will be an amazing, amazing thing. So yeah, that's pretty much all I got to say. Great dude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saint Ju... Juice, Juice. Saint Just, sorry. Next is Kevin Leatherwood. Kevin Leatherwood, looking on the screen. If you are a call-in user, Kevin, please star 67 to unmute your phone. Kevin Leatherwood. If you are a call-in user, press star 67 to unmute your phone.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. The floor is yours.
All right, so my name is Kevin Leatherwood. Some know me as Randy. Jaquan, he was like a brother to me. He was a right hand to me, a best friend to me. He was like the life of the city. Everyone in the city, they loved him, and he loved him back. He showed that he cared for everyone. He was a mentor to many kids in the city. A lot of kids looked up to him. And it wasn't even only kids, even adults looked up to him. He put a smile on your face, like you couldn't be around him and not laugh. He was just a bright light. He brought everyone together. He was someone you can call on for anything. If you need a help, assistance with anything, just call him. He was always there. He was a role model. He was a big role model to his brothers, Jada, Kai, but he was an amazing brother, son, amazing friend. He finished, he finished school, got a degree, played basketball overseas in Argentina. He was one of the top players in Connecticut, if not the top player in Connecticut. A lot of people couldn't stop him. He had this one move that was just crazy. Between-the-legs, step, go. Couldn't stop it. He was also a rapper. He brought joy to the city. Yeah, and we used to party together. Whenever we did a party together, it was no drama because everyone respected him as a person and as a man. He was able to bring hundreds, even thousands of people out to events, and the events went perfectly fine. If you didn't know him personally, or if you never had a conversation with him, I know you saw one of his videos, one of his crazy videos on social media. He made you laugh. He brought joy, joy to your heart. Yeah, if we can turn Rosemont Street to Jaquan Walters' JQ Way, I'm with it 100% because it's well-deserved and well-needed because he has, he's going to be remembered. And I would like that to be something to help push his name forward, and I would be remembered. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherwood. Next, we have Mr. Jerome Harris. Mr. Jerome Harris, the floor is yours.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harris. The floor is yours.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jerome Harris, and thank you for giving me the time to speak. Yeah, Jaquan was the heart of our city. I mean, he really loved, he literally loved everyone in Hartford. He cared about everyone, even if he didn't even know you like that. He really knew how to put a smile on your face, and that was just a special trait about him. I truly hope the council all can come to an agreement and honor, you know, Jaquan and make this happen for him and his family. He deserves it a lot. You know, I met JQ the first time on the basketball court right at Keene Park in the North End of Hartford, and he always was very competitive and loved to win at everything he did. Everywhere we go throughout Connecticut, you could bring, you bring his name up, and there will be nothing but positive feedback. I mean, we love him so much, and we pray that the council hears us all out and grant this proposal. We are very sad that this had to happen to our brother, for sure. And I know right now he is looking down proud of all of his family and friends that we're, you know, just going hard for him. So we love him so much, and may his spirit live forever.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, we have Scott Sil. Scott Sil, the floor is yours. I missed this. There you go. The floor is yours, Mr. Sil. Yep, you're all set. The floor is yours.
Hello, thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name is Scott Sil. I knew JQ, Jaquan, through the game of basketball. He was a teammate of mine, a friend of mine, and he was just way more than just a basketball player. He was way more than just a person that, I don't know, it's still hurts today. JQ, I played basketball overseas for four years. I know the basketball world is very small, so I actually had people from Argentina contact me that we are mutual friends and just couldn't even believe it, like JQ would walk in a room and just have that smile on his face or just be laughing and joking. You could just, he was always just there as a good person. I feel like the only way to really just show our love for him is to give him the respect and be able to have the street name named after him. I feel like that's the least we could do. Honestly, just feel like it just, it still don't seem real. But I feel like we need to honor him in a good way. He's a legend. He's forever. Will be a person that everybody will remember and will live on forever.
Thank you, Mr. Sil. Mr. Khalid Thompson. Mr. Khalid Thompson, if you are on a phone line, please press star 67 to unmute your phone. Mr. Khalid Thompson. Mr. Khalid Thompson, if you are on the phone, please press star 67 to unmute. All right, we'll move on next. Mr. Mitch Oliver. No, you were here earlier, Mr. Mitch Oliver. Please press star 67 to unmute your phone. Mr. Mitch Oliver. The floor is yours. Yes.
Okay. All right. Mitch Oliver, the head basketball coach at Albertus Magnus in New Haven. I coached JQ for four years, and you know, I can offer, you know, a totally different perspective. He was a great player, obviously, an All-American player, but an All-American... person. Um, you know, I've seen him do so many things that he just breathed positivity and infectious smile. He was authentic, you know? In, in a day and age where everyone hides on their phones and social media and all that kind of stuff, you know, he was the one guy. He was the glue to our entire program. And what he did was, he would keep so many different people together on campus. Everyone respected him. His presence commanded respect. When he walked in a room, there was respect there because he was respectful to everyone. We traveled together. We, we would, you know, we'd go play a game on the road and, and usually, and we'd be in a hotel or whatever, and if someone came up to say, hey, Coach, I gotta talk to you about one of your players, usually when that happens, it's not a good sign. Every time that, when I was with him, when he was on our team, it was because they wanted to compliment him. That number twenty-three for you guys, great player, but what a great person. He came up to us after the game, and these are people that were maybe heckling and stuff like that. Um, I, I can't, you know, explain to you, um, you know, how big that is. I've been coaching college for twenty-five years and, and the advantage I have is I get to see, you know, all these guys, you know, come into, you know, the college as, as a young high school graduate and, uh, and leave as a young mature man. And it wasn't even close with him. Um, he killed in the classroom. He killed it on, on the court. And I ran camps every year and he was, he was the go-to at the camp. I had assistant coaches, you know, adult assistant coaches and, and head high school coaches working at my camp. If I had to leave the gym, I put J Q in charge. And the kids gravitated towards him, all right? And, and he touched so many lives. He touched so many lives on our campus, whether it was an eight-year-old kid at our camp or a seventy-five-year-old professor. And that's something you can't teach. That, that's something, that, that's a gift. And he had the gift of communication. And I will tell you the impact it can have on, on naming the street after him and, and seeing his name up there. Every day I come, I come to work, get out of the car, I walk to the gym and I have some comfort knowing that I look on the wall and I see his name up there on a thousand-point banner, All-American banner, and I see it every day. Every day I see that, you know, puts a smile on my face. Because you gotta understand, that's the impact. The key word here is the impact that he had on people. And that can continue. He can continue to have an impact on people if you can see his name on that street sign. And, and that's what this is about. And that, and that's, that's a perspective that I could offer because I'm seeing that every day now. When I walk to that gym on the way to my office and I see his name on a banner every day, I take a look. And, and that's what I'm talking about. And I can't tell you the, the amount of messages I've gotten from, you know, even now, it's from, from former players, opponents, you know? Talking about a guy that went into gyms and dropped forty points and, you know, beat a team by thirty, but I would get calls from coaches going, what a great kid. Um, he's, he's gonna be my vote. It's easy to vote for someone, um, you know, for, in an award when they're a tremendous player, but it's a lot easier to vote for someone that are a tremendous person. And, and that's what he was. And he would go out of his way. He made me a better coach. He made me a better person. I could lean on him. And you can't, you can't, how many times can you have, uh, you know, a coach that's been coaching long as me say he can lean on an eighteen, nineteen-year-old, twenty-year-old kid during their career? Um, he's done so many great things for the school. He was Albertus Magnus. Um, we're gonna do a lot of things down here and we hope the city of Hartford will, will do the same. Um, the amount of lives that he touched, and again, the key word here i- is the impact. I mean, he, he loved and cared for everyone. He would go out of his way to talk to anyone. And, and it wasn't, it's not just text messages and stuff like that. He'd pick up the phone and call. No one does it anymore. He would, he would call. He'd call me all the time. He would call professors. And he loved anything that he got into, he went all out, all right? And, you know, his, it was a motor, a motor that could, that, that you cannot, you know, imitate or replace. It was all him. Positivity, all right? He was authentic, loving, caring. But again, I'll say one more time, the impact that it can have by having his name on that street sign can, can do so much for the city, for anyone that's driving up and looking at that and carrying on his legacy. So, I just wanted to get that point across, um, to, to help people understand how much of an impact he had on everyone that he came across. Thank you for listening and I hope, uh, we do the right thing.
Thank you, Coach Oliver. Uh, next we have Leroy Col- Collier, Leroy Collier. If you are on the phone, press star six seven to unmute your phone. Leroy Collier. If you are on the phone, press star six seven to unmute. Last, uh, time, Leroy Collier. If you're on the phone, please unmute your phone. We'll move on. Uh, Reese, I have a name here by Reese. I'm sorry, I don't have the whole name here. Uh, uh, email, trust God, stay humble. Reese, are you on the line? Press star six seven to unmute your phone.
Hey, hello?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Hey, how y'all doing, man? Uh, God bless everybody. Thank, thankful for everybody to be here and have a chance to voice their opinion on why we should change the street name to, um, J Q's Way. Um, J Q, best friend, brother. Somebody with a great smile, somebody that was courageous, ambition, ambitious. Um, great person. Uh, I can go on for years, man. Um, it's really impacted my life in a way that I would never even could have possibly imagined. Um, he made me a better person. I inspired him. He inspired me. Um, we had some future plans that we had, you know, going forward in life and a couple of investments and, you know, things that we wanted to do. And, um, it's tough, man. It's tough waking up. It's tough going to sleep at night. It's tough driving and hearing the songs that we loved the most and I can't look to the right and, you know, see him there dancing with me, laughing, cracking jokes. Um, he's a great son. Great brother. Great nephew, great mentor. The kids loved him. Energy is out of this world. It's, it's tough, man. It's tough. I don't even know how to, how to really like sum it up in words or even like. It's tough. It's tough, man. If we can all just make this happen, if you guys can make this happen, it'd be great. That'd be something that somebody could look at for the rest of our lives. His name will always live on forever. He was definitely a living legend. I love my brother. I miss my brother. That's it. God bless y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Uh, next we have, uh, Mike Anderson. Mr. Mike Anderson, I know I see you on the screen. The floor is yours.
What's up, what's up, y'all? Um, Happy New Year's. Um, I can't really say. I don't wanna say much about him playing ball, but, um, him off the court, like everybody said, like his energy just had some kind of like magnet where everybody came together. Um, it's just that living in a small city, it's, it's hard to be seen. But with J Q, like, everybody knew who he was just off his smile when he came in the gym or if he walked in the house or wherever you saw him. Like, the way he brought everybody together was, was just different. Like, he made friends of people that, you know, just met the first day, you know, like for him not to be here, that's just, that's just tough on everybody, like, everybody's still shook, shucking up about it. Um, like, for, for him to have his name on a street where he grew up, that would mean more, that would be more to everybody. To me, his peoples, the kids, even kids that barely even know him. You know, when they walking down the street, they say J Q's Way, like, oh, I'm on J Q's Way, like, they don't know what it's for. And then somebody could just explain to him who that was. And that, him having his name there would just, you know, keep his name alive, you know? Um, I, I, I can't really say much. I'm just still shucking up about it, like, that's, this is, this is crazy. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah.
Um, the, I'm looking across, I think everyone spoke. Is there someone here that didn't get the opportunity to speak? Um, please press star six seven if you're on the line to unmute your phone. Again, if someone was, did not get the opportunity to speak, please, please press star six seven to unmute your phone. Um, is there Nathan Sinclair? Nathan Sinclair? Second time, Nathan Sinclair, if you could press star six seven to unmute your phone. Nathan Sinclair, if you could please press star six seven to unmute your phone. Okay. Next, we have, uh, Tyreek Lindo. Now, go, go ahead, Eugene. The floor is yours. The call in person, go ahead, whoever just spoke. Is it Tyreek or Nathan?
Um, Nathan about to, he's about to come on. I'm about to give him the link. He's on, they can go to that person.
Okay, uh, well, Tyreek. Tyreek Lindo. Tyreek Lindo, if you have, uh, if you're on the phone, if you could press star six seven to unmute. Last time, uh, Tyreek Lindo, if you have, uh, if you're calling in on a cell phone, please press star six seven to unmute your phone. All right, we'll go back to Nathan. Nathan, are you there now? Uh, Nathan Sinclair, are you there? All right, we're gonna give it one more time. What I will say, uh, Nathan, uh, whoever is, uh, support, um, knows Nathan Sinclair, he can send an email to city council. Uh, my email is, uh, nick, N I C K dot LeBron at Hartford dot gov. We would love to hear his response. I'll share it with all my council colleagues. We wanna make sure everyone's voice is heard. Nathan Sinclair, one last time. Nathan? All right. Definitely would like to hear everyone, uh, get the opportunity, but seeing that Nathan has not been able to log on, please, whoever knows Nathan, just have him, again, send me an email, um, or give me, uh, my contact information is on the city of Hartford, uh, website. Um, so, that concludes our public hearing for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for attending today and I appreciate you. Thank you to my council colleagues. Everyone, have a good evening and be safe.